Good evening. I'm Nancy Burrows, Voter Service Chair for the South Kingstown Narragansett League of Women Voters. On behalf of the league, I would like to welcome you to our third and final Meet the Candidates night for 2014. I would especially like to welcome members of the audience here at Narragansett Town Hall who are the candidates for the Narragansett School Committee who are appearing now, and the candidates for the Town Council who will be appearing at 8:00. Also, I'd like to welcome our viewers on Cox Channel 17 and Verizon Channel 28. Democracy is not a spectator sport, and one of the most important duties we have as citizens is to learn about the issues and candidates so we can make informed choices. If you find a forum like this as an essential part of your election season, consider joining the league to help us provide nonpartisan voter education and to advocate for good government. Despite its name, the league is open to both men and women. There are membership materials on the table by the door, along with other voter information. We are here tonight to ask questions of the candidates and to listen to their responses, so please hold your applause and refrain from reacting to the candidates' answers. I would like to thank many people for helping with this forum, the League of Women Voters Rhode Island Education Fund for providing funding, the Town of Narragansett for the use of the Town Hall, and the town staff for their help and cooperation, members of the community and the local League of Women Voters who have worked on planning this event, the Westerly Peg Access Studio for handling the live broadcast and frequent rebroadcast of this forum, and the South Kingstown Independent which helped gather questions from the public is live tweeting this forum and will post the video of the forum on their website. Last but by no means least, I would particularly like to welcome and thank our moderator, Elizabeth Chandash, a longtime league member and currently president of the Wakefield Rotary Club. Now to Elizabeth, who I know will keep the discussion lively and the discourse civil.
Good evening. The format for this evening's forum will be slightly different because there are four school committee seats open and only four candidates. Our goal is for the candidates to answer questions from the public about how the schools are run and what the school committee's philosophy is. Therefore, each question will be directed to only one candidate, but all candidates will have the opportunity to expand on that person's answer if he or she has something to add or to challenge. A question will be directed to each candidate before a second question is directed at any candidate. All candidates will have one minute to respond. Candidates will be seated in alphabetical order. Each candidate will also have the opportunity to make one-minute opening and one-minute closing statements. Closing statements will be in reverse order of opening statements. We'll start with Tammy McNeese.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the league for hosting this event tonight. I do feel very fortunate to get another two years to serve with my colleagues. I think we're a very high-functioning group, and we are surrounded by excellence from the superintendent to the building principals to the wonderful teachers in our district and the supportive parents. I'd like to use my opening to share a little bit about myself, and then my closing to talk about the great initiatives and work that's planned for the next two years. I think what makes me an asset to the school committee is that I bring multiple perspectives. I've been the chair of the school committee for the past six years, but I'm also a teacher. I have three education degrees. I'm a certified principal and a certified special education director, but I think one of my most important roles is that I'm a parent of two great kids who currently attend Narragansett High School, and they're here tonight. I'm proud of the outstanding education that they've received, and I want to continue to work hard to ensure that all Narragansett students receive an outstanding education that meets their individual unique needs and that we continue to remain one of the top-ranked leading districts in the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Nobles.
Thank you. Good evening, and my appreciation also to the league for hosting our forum this evening. First, let me address my motivation for running, which is very simple and straightforward, and that is to make sure that every student crossing the stage to receive an Narragansett High School diploma has the knowledge and skills necessary to prepare them to be successful at the next step, be that college, the workforce, the military, or some combination thereof. Presently, at Community College of Rhode Island, which is the gateway institution for higher education in the state, 66 percent of incoming freshmen require one or more remedial courses. Rhode Island educational statistics are quite alarming. Seventy-one percent of Rhode Island high school graduates, high school students do not graduate from high school. Sixty-five percent of that number do not continue their formal education. Of that, they can, of those that continue on to Rhode Island Public Colleges, URI's graduation rate is 42 percent, RIC's graduation rate is 16 percent, and CCRI's graduation rate is 12 percent. So if you project that trend into the workforce, we find that about 58 percent of the current Rhode Island workforce in the prime working years of '24 to '64 have no post-secondary credential. Needless to say, this is damaging to our economic and social well-being of the state.
Thank you. Keith Rinaldi.
Hi, I am Keith Rinaldi. I am going for my second term for Narragansett School Committee, and what Tammy said earlier was perfect. We are a diverse group of individuals here that collectively really take every part, I think, of what you need to make a beautiful and great school system. And I'm going to scratch what I just wrote and go off of what Diane just said about the economic development, because that is really one of my number-one focuses. And I take a different approach, which is, I think, the most beautiful part about our dynamic, is Diane will take those stats, and she'll present them, and I'll take that information, and I will process it a different way. And I wanted to share with everybody that about six months ago, I actually took a new job, a new career path, because I found an opportunity to splice my love of politics, of education, and of economic development, and I'm doing marketing development between businesses and schools. So it's my job to make business-to-school relationships. So my dedication to Narragansett is one in that I see a community that has absolutely no end to the potential, and I see a community that has all the resources in the world to make something that's unique and that leads the way for not only our state, but our nation. Thank you.
Guy DeWardner, also a candidate, is not able to be here this evening, and Frank White, also a candidate, is not able to be here due to a health issue. He has an opening statement that he has sent. He has just had a total hip replacement operation and has sent this letter. "This is my fifth year on the Narragansett School Committee. We have a great committee, a great school system, great teachers, and a great administration. I am proud to be part of this. I have been a teacher all my life, 42 years as a college professor, and 15 years as a volunteer in the local schools. Although I began as a temporary appointment, I thoroughly enjoy the job and hope to stay on. I feel like I am paying back for all the good things the town did for my family. Our most important issue is local taxes. Taxpayers, including me, do not want any increases, and due to serious procrastination by the town, we owe a fortune in pension benefits, especially other post-employment benefits. This hampers our ability to plan new initiatives. We are one of the top school districts in the state, but we are too small for cost efficiencies and have high extra support needs. Our municipal per capita costs are the highest in South County, further restricting the town's overall budget. I hope we can address these problems in the coming years. The state is not helping much with our cost problems. We receive only a small fraction of the per capita state aid of our neighboring towns, but town residents are with us and, for example, have donated nearly a million dollars toward our new community athletic complex, a fact I find remarkable. I have a very good feeling about the future of the Narragansett school system." Frank We will start with our first question, and it will be addressed to Tammy McNeese. "Private donors are lined up to pay for a substantial portion of the Narragansett Athletic Complex. Who will pay for the ongoing maintenance and staffing with declining enrollment? Is that the best bang for the district's buck? With a 1,500-person athletic facility, where will we find the 1,500 parking spaces?" Please respond.
That's a great question, and I feel pretty well-versed to speak on this. The new athletic complex is going to be a great investment for Narragansett. The price tag is $3.2 million. We have two-thirds of the funding right now. The private donors have stepped up tenfold. We thought our fundraising goal was going to be $650,000. We've almost doubled that. Currently, we have raised $1,143,000, and that includes a $400,000 large recreation grant that we received from DEM. So the donors have stepped up. We've raised $1.1 million in funds from fundraising. We have another third of the money that's been set aside from the school department fund balance, and so we're asking voters to come out on November 4th to help pay for that third part for the funding. As far as who's going to maintain the facility, it's going to be maintained by the school department. We were very thoughtful in what we selected to try to make this meet the needs of the students and the community and also be cost-effective. Right now, the school district is paying $25,000 to maintain the grass field a year. So by switching to a synthetic turf field, we're going to significantly reduce our maintenance costs, and it is going to be a complex that is going to seat 1,000 people. There's going to be more than enough parking at the pier school and the high school, even the elementary school if needed to shuttle for large events. And this is a facility that can generate new revenue to offset the maintenance costs, because in the summer, this is not being used by children. It can be rented, and outside users can contribute. Thank you.
No, I will let you speak further, but I was, we're going to allow the other candidates, if they would like to address that question also. If you would, would someone else like to address that? Mr. Rinaldi?
Thank you. And hopefully, what makes our school committee a good team is, hopefully, I can pick up where Tammy left off and say that we host the blessing of the fleet. 3,000 runners there, no problem. Raise $150,000 for that. This new facility adds value to our community, and it is my belief, and I hope it's the rest of the community's belief, that with your added value, your property increases. Your equity increases. But what also increases is the opportunity for us to recruit more families for the specific reason of going to our school system, enjoying our beautiful town. And I believe that this complex is one of the first public-private relationships that the public schools can partner with private agencies to make something that increases our overall value and recruits more families to live here full-time. Thank you.
Ms. Nobles, do you have a comment on that?
No, I agree with both my colleagues.
Pardon me?
I have nothing to add. I agree with both my colleagues. I think they addressed it very well.
No, I could go on all night about that topic, but thank you, though. Thank you.
Well, I mean, the question was, who will pay for the ongoing maintenance and staffing?
It's the school department.
The school department will do that. Okay. All right. The school committee, and this is directed to Ms. Nobles, "The school committee has discussed increasing vocational technical options at the high school. What is your opinion on that proposal? Is the district doing enough for students who aren't college-bound?"
Well, according to the Georgetown University Center for Education and the Economy, 60 percent of the jobs of the future are going to require more than high school training. And it's very important that we provide, as a comprehensive high school, that we provide alternatives for our many different students. The, I think the most important thing that we can do in terms of providing alternatives for all the different level students is to make sure that our students are well-versed in the basic academic and technical skills as well as having opportunities in other areas, such as the career and tech education skills.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to comment on that question?
I would. I just wanted to talk specifically, I think it was referenced in the question. I do want to share a little bit about some really exciting news about our agricultural science program. Right now, there's a greenhouse that sits out there that really, you know, it's a liability. It needs to be replaced. And for the past six years that I've been on the school committee, I've been part of the building committee, and this has been an item that we've been discussing year after year and trying to figure out, you know, what's the best thing to do that's going to meet the needs of the students and also expand the program. You know, we might even be able to attract students from other districts as well. So what's in the works? We finally reached a decision the past few weeks. It's going to be a brand-new greenhouse that's going to be built this coming school year, and we're also going to have expanded agricultural science classroom space, and really going to be looking at the next couple of years, expanding our coursework and expanding that curriculum. So I think that, you know, again, the current ag science program is very unique to Narragansett. It makes, it's one of the things that really makes us stand out across the state, and you're going to see some major improvements in that area coming up the next year, so I'm very excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rinaldi, do you have a comment?
I do, thank you. And I wanted to let you go first so I didn't double up. And to also answer that, I think that Narragansett is being diligent about focusing on that, and I believe public schools were stifled due to standardizations, and we are now coming out of that, and we're going to be able to institute programs such as our relationship with the Harrington School for Digital Literacy over at the pier school and the middle school, and the elementary school. And that will actually lead to different opportunities for students to get into even technical digital careers, like filming, be on a newscast, being in television or radio. And that's starting to develop those vocational traits that we need and we need more of.
Thank you very much. The third question is directed to you, Mr. Rinaldi. "What is the single most important issue you would want the General Assembly to work on at the State House on your behalf?"
Single most, can you repeat it? The question?
What is the single most important issue that you would want the General Assembly to work on at the State House on your behalf as a school committee member of Narragansett? What is the single most important issue you see that the State House could help with the Narragansett school system?
That's a great question. I think of, what's a practical answer? Everything that is running through my mind right now has to do with, how do we better prepare our students in a very realistic fashion for getting into the world? So if there are pieces of legislation that can help have more ties with businesses, to develop better relationships and ongoing relationships that have to do with working with curriculum that both meet standard core and developing a curriculum that gets the kids out of the classroom, I would think that that is an issue to actually bring up if it's not brought up in any fashion on the state level. So something for our politicians to push, a piece of legislation that pushes the connection between being outside the classroom and businesses working with our public schools, so we have more of a public-private hybrid.
Thank you. Ms. Nobles, would you care to comment on that question?
Yes, I would. The single most important issue I think the General Assembly can do to help our district in Narragansett is not to send down to us mandates without the funding. In other words, no future unfunded mandates. They're a tremendous burden to our budget, and it's something that we have oftentimes sent resolutions to our delegation in the General Assembly, asking for no more unfunded mandates. The second item that I think is equally important is that the charter school funding needs to be weighted as opposed to just a one, one cost for a student, whether they're in the second grade or the 11th grade. So I think if the General Assembly would go back and tweak that funding formula for the charter schools, and that would give us relief also.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McNeese?
Yes, I agree with what Keith and Diane said, especially Diane, about the charter school funding. I think one of the biggest things at the state level they could do to help all school districts is to lift the moratorium on school construction. You know, these are funds that are desperately needed by districts across the state. You know, we're in a terrible fiscal climate right now, and unfortunately, when districts have to make tough decisions, a lot of times, capital improvements is what gets hurt the most, you know, and districts across the state are having challenges with that. We're having challenges as well. You know, there's many, many things we want to do to maintain and protect the town's assets. So if that moratorium was lifted and we were able to, you know, receive some reimbursement to put toward future projects, that would be a tremendous help to us. Also, you know, teacher evaluation and test scores for graduation, I'm sure is going to come up in a further question, but that, the state was very helpful this past session with that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. This next question is directed to you also. "How do you plan to manage the educational needs of Narragansett students, considering the town's pension and other post-employment benefits debt?"
And I think, you know, that's something that, you know, really came to the forefront this past budget season. It's a problem that's going to continue to exist. I think the school committee and the town council need to have a lot of communication with each other on this topic, a lot of work sessions, you know, and not just during budget season. You know, budget season is an extremely busy time for both governing bodies, and that ongoing dialogue needs to be frequent and happen throughout the process. This coming year, we have two contracts that are going to expire in July, our teachers' contract and our support union contract. You know, it's going to be very important that our negotiating team, you know, makes the pension, the OPEB, you know, a big part of that process because the decisions that come out of those negotiations are going to impact, you know, the programming that we can provide and the capital improvements that we can make. So I think it's ongoing communication that's really needed during that process.
All right. Would anyone care to also respond to that question?
Sure.
Mr. Rinaldi?
Yes, thank you. I do think that, looking forward, I think a new model is needed. The increased relationship between town and school is paramount. It cannot be emphasized enough. We have worked separately and in the dark for too long. A positive, growing relationship with the town council is the only way to make it work, and to find a new model that maybe looks at very successful school systems and adopts certain features. For instance, LaSalle Academy has a $20 million endowment. I know they've been around twice as long as we have as a school system, but they're doing something right. I think to investigate the best and the brightest and to incorporate it and to make it a part of what our town is will really make our town rise up to the potential that is here.
Thank you. Question number five is going to Ms. Nobles. "Do you support Commissioner Gis' teacher evaluation process? Should student test scores play a role in teacher evaluations? How should the district evaluate teachers, and how can it best deal with underperforming teachers?" A multi, multi, multi-question question. Well, teacher evaluation is basically a formative assessment that provides meaningful feedback to teachers in an effort to continually improve teaching and learning. And the process shouldn't be overly burdensome to the administrators or to the teachers, and it shouldn't be done just for the sake of saying it's been done. I think there have been some good changes made by the commissioner in the evaluation system to lessen the burden on administrators and teachers alike. But the goal is to have a highly effective and caring teacher in every classroom, and a meaningful evaluation can contribute to that result. I know in my 30-plus years of working in community colleges in several different states, most years, I've always had an evaluation, and some have been very meaningful and helpful, others have just been an exercise in paperwork. So the system needs to be developed to be meaningful to teachers and to continually improve teaching and learning. Okay. Did you answer, how should the district evaluate teachers? Did you include that in your answer? How do you think the district should evaluate teachers?
Well, we're using the ride model.
Okay. All right. Would anyone care to respond to that also?
I just want to add. I mean, I agree wholeheartedly with Diane. I think you gave a great answer to that. We do have to use the ride model. We have no choice with that. You know, and I do believe in high standards for all students. I believe in accountability for teachers, but again, I think Diane really hit the nail on the head. It has to have a purpose. You know, I think students should be able to demonstrate, you know, proficiency in multiple ways, you know, and so the teacher evaluation process, you know, it can't just rely on student test scores on one measure. It has to be multiple measures. But I think Diane really, you know, articulated that clearly. I agree with what you said.
All right, thank you.
You actually made me want to say something now. Yes, it should be measured on multiple layers. Absolutely.
All right. Mr. Rinaldi, we have you up for, "Explain your approach to collective bargaining."
Collectively. No. You'll have to forgive me that I'm not very well-versed in the process. I didn't sit on that committee. But collective bargaining, I think it's a sensitive issue, of course, but it needs to be this ongoing relationship. I know I say that over and over again, but the better rapport you have with your teachers, with the administration, with the school committee, and having that conversation on an ongoing basis, if you really know the pulse of the teaching community, of our staff community, then you're going to know their needs, and they're going to know your needs. They're going to know the dollars and cents, to be forthright, to be open, transparent, and creative, and have forums for people's voices to be heard. I'll tell you, I get to coach, and I get to ride the buses, and I get to go in the classrooms, and I get to hear people, teachers, parents, their point of views, their ideas, and sometimes they don't know where to send these ideas to. So we need to have more of an open forum. We need to utilize technology better to do so, and we need to incorporate more opinions and more data into that collective bargaining pursuit.
Thank you. Ms. Nobles or Ms. McNeese, would you care to elaborate?
My approach to collective bargaining would be a collegial and a collaborative one, as Keith referenced, as opposed to an adversarial approach. I think if both sides keep the focus on what is good for the district, what is best for the students, the teachers, the staff, the administrators, that should be the common goal, and that's where the focus would be. And I think those, if you keep your focus and your eye onto that, that you'd have successful negotiations. And our two members that have our negotiating team, Frank White and Guy DeWardner, unfortunately are not here this evening, but I think that they both did an excellent job, along with our superintendent, Catherine Sapala, in the negotiation of the most recent contracts. And I believe their approach was collaborative and collegial.
Thank you. Anything further to add, Ms. McNeese?
Just nothing different. I think, you know, again, it was, you know, it needs to be a respectful process, open lines of communication, and student-centered, and that's exactly what Keith and Diane elaborated on.
All right. Well, we're starting with you for question number seven, as we move right along here. "The district owns and maintains its own buses. What do you think, Ms. McNeese? What do you think about sourcing this service as other districts have done?"
Well, any chance I can get to, you know, recognize our bus drivers, our bus monitors, I'd like to do that. I think they do an outstanding job and provide an outstanding service to our district. You know, it's more than just, you know, driving a bus or, you know, helping a child cross the street. a child cross the street. You know, what the bus drivers and the monitors in Narragansett do, you know, they are really looking out, you know, for the total child. You know, we've had a few instances, since I've been on the school committee in the past six years, where there's been some safety issues, and the driver or the monitor recognize, you know, and very, very young children, that the parent wasn't there, or that there was some suspicious activity around, or it was the wrong person trying to pick up a child. You know, those are things that are very important, so when you have a fleet of drivers and monitors that know the children, they know the parents, they know the surroundings, they know if something is wrong. We had a, a young girl that almost died this past year, you know, and her life was saved by a Narragansett bus driver and monitor who knew that child and knew that something was wrong with her, and it wasn't, you know, just a minor thing, you know, so, you know, it's an issue, I'll wind up, I know my time's up. It's an issue that needs to be explored, it's something that I think during this term, you know, we have to look at. We have to do, you know, what's cost-effective for taxpayers, but we have to do what's, you know, the best thing for residents as well. So it's going to be an issue that is going to be explored this term, and I, I welcome a lot of community input and participation as we explore this issue.
Would either of the other candidates care to respond to this question?
I agree completely with what Tammy said.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Rinaldi, you have a comment or not? You look like you're cogitating there.
I'll, I'll keep it short, but I, I do want to recognize Dave Carrera. I mean, he will keep the buses that were, were done, he'll gut them, use all the parts, they fix everything themselves, they are so diligent with maintaining a spectacular fleet, and having a staff that is second to none. And you know something, it's my hope, more than anything, that we could further develop that to lower costs, and that Dave could even groom somebody or other people that could do his job the way he did it, and then upgrade that, so we could be more efficient, and somehow even make the garage a teaching garage. Those are my dreams, those are my hopes, those are my vision. I know it's a little lofty sounding, but that's what I would hope we could do. But of course, we're going to do what is most cost-effective for our town, make sure that we are not putting us in the red, and that we are progressing.
Thank you very much. I, I know Mr. Carrera, and he is a miracle man, isn't he?
Yes.
Yes. Ms. Nobles, many South County students are pursuing private school education. How can the district more actively retain students? How realistic of an option is it to pursue Jamestown students?
Well, I think that our, our high school especially has been recognized as one of the top high schools in the state. Our district has also been recognized as an outstanding district. The services, the comprehensive education that we provide should be the, the draw in terms of maintaining students here in our district. We have been in, in discussion with, with Jamestown. As you know, they presently send their students to North Kingston High School, but we have been in talks with them about the possibility of giving their students a choice to perhaps go to Narragansett High School or North Kingston High School. So I think that is a very promising situation that we are actively pursuing.
Thank you. Would anyone else care to respond to this question?
I'll go.
Mr. Rinaldi?
I, I love that question, and one of my passions is that we have the opportunity, Narragansett Public School has the opportunity to act more like a private school. There is no reason why we should be losing too many kids to private schools. We can offer, offer more open houses just to start, so that kids can see our high school and get acquainted with it, rather than just following a legacy, my, my parent went to somewhere else. I think that Jamestown is a better fit for Narragansett. I spent a lot of time in that community, and I think Jamestown is going to bring another aspect of the arts and cultural diversity into our school system. And I think that, I know that Jamestown does have a home in Narragansett, and they will be here, and we are going to have Jamestown students in Narragansett in the next five years.
Thank you. Yes, let's go to, oh, Ms. McNeese, yes.
I just want to say, you know, we, Narragansett has been doing a lot, you know, to expand our opportunities for all students, but, you know, the past couple of years, you know, we've added virtual learning to the high school. You know, I, I just explained a little bit about how we plan to expand our agricultural science program with a new greenhouse. We've, you know, we had a significant upgrade to the high school gym with a brand-new hardwood floor, and we have a new athletic complex that's coming next fall. So, you know, we've continued to work on the curriculum, and, you know, expand in areas that we need to, adding computer courses, adding ag science courses, you know, whatever it is we need to retain kids and meet all their needs. And so now, we're finally going to have the facilities that are going to be as good as, or even better, as these private schools. And I would love to have Jamestown students come here. I think, as Keith mentioned, that would be a great partnership, you know, and, and we'd love to have them, even if it's just a few at a time, to try us out, and then, and then take it from there.
Thank you. Mr. Rinaldi, what do you think about the use of standardized testing? Is there too much emphasis on it? Should it be used as a graduation requirement?
That's a fun question. Standardized testing, and standardized learning, and standardized personalities, and standardized learning traits, and standardized, standardization's always going to be there. How are we going to work with it in an evolving educational culture? If we're going to have standardizations in math, science, reading, writing, then why don't we have it in design and engineering, in the arts, acting? You have the same principles, you've got to memorize, and you've got to perform. I sit down and memorize equations, or then I learn how to adapt them. Okay, well, I'm an actor, and I memorize a script, and then I envelop that script into my own personality, and then I perform it. So show me a different set of principles. You're dealing with the same principles, so I think we need to expand standardizations to incorporate the whole person, rather than saying we have to do away with them, because they're always going to be there, they're an absolute. So how do we work with them, and how do we evolve them?
Thank you. Would Ms. McNeese or Ms. Nobles like to respond to that? Ms. Nobles, you first.
I think standardized testing should be part of the graduation requirement, but only if the new PARC test, which is taking the place of the Kneecap test, is, is carefully aligned with the Common Core standards that have been adopted by the state of Rhode Island, and the curriculum delivers instruction aligned to both. If any of those three is not in sync, then it would be not a fair, objective measure of student learning. But if the standards and the curriculum and the assessment are aligned, then it would be a valuable tool, and if, an objective measurement of learning. But still, it would be only one part of the graduation requirements, and along with the performance-based components or elements that are included in the graduation requirements. And that includes the, the portfolio, and the senior project, and the number of credits attempted and successfully completed.
Thank you. Ms. McNeese?
I think, and especially in very recent years, there has been an overemphasis on standardized testing, especially, you know, last year, when students were required to take the Kneecap test, but they were also required to pilot the PARC test. You know, we're switched, we've switched to the Common Core standards, you know, so I believe in, in measuring progress, you know, but there has to be a balance with that. Teachers need time to teach, students need time to learn, you know, can't just be preparing for the next standardized test. So I agree with what Diane said, at the very, at the present time, standardized testing should not be a requirement for graduation, because we switched to the Common Core, and the kids haven't even taken the new PARC test yet, and we have to, you know, measure that and see if that's going to be aligned, as Diane mentioned. You know, and some point down the road, if it's completely aligned, you know, then that's a conversation that can be had. But at the present time, I'm glad that the legislature, you know, made the right decision. It's not appropriate right now to hold kids accountable for graduation on a test where they haven't been taught those standards. And there are other ways to, to demonstrate proficiency. At Narragansett High School, the kids have the portfolio and the senior project, and there are other ways to measure proficiency for graduation.
Thank you. And then you get the next question, too, so aren't you lucky? Would you support eliminating either February or April vacation?
That's a good question. You know, I, my personal opinion is I don't think that you should eliminate a whole entire week, but again, you have to look at, you know, what's the purpose behind that question? Is the purpose of eliminating one week of school to shorten the school year in June, to have kids go back a little later after Labor Day? Is it to make the school year 185 days for kids instead of 180 days? You know, so it's finding out, you know, what's the purpose behind that question. But I think as districts, you know, we've had some, some horrendous weather the past few years, with hurricanes and snowstorms, you know, and it's not conducive for learning, you know, for kids to be going to school until June 28th, it's way too hot. And so, you know, I think it has to be purposeful. In Narragansett, actually, at our school committee meeting tomorrow night, we're going to be talking about, you know, a couple options about not eliminating the whole week of February, but if teachers and parents would be supportive of taking a few days off either end, and adding that to either August or June. So, you know, I, I wouldn't support a decision like that unless all the stakeholders were strongly in favor of that, and other districts were making that change as well.
Thank you. Would anyone, Ms. Nobles or Mr. Rinaldi, would you care to comment?
Well, as Tammy mentioned, other school districts, as well as ours, are, are starting to be, look at adjustments to the school calendar, to provide some flexibility, either in the start date, moving it a little closer to Labor Day, or the ending date, to, you know, to eliminate going late into June because of stormy weather in the winter. So I think it's, this is a decision that will be made with a lot of community involvement, and it will, isn't necessarily a matter of eliminating one of the week-long vacations, but it could be just a matter of shortening one as an option, as opposed to totally eliminating one. But I do think it's one that the school committee needs to engage with the community in robust dialogue when this decision is being made, if, if in fact it is made.
Thank you. Mr. Rinaldi, a comment?
Just the last part that Diane said is that there needs to be a very close discussion with the community, the committee, and, you know, our, yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. We're on to question number 11, and it's Ms. Nobles. South Kingston has a three-strikes-and-you're-out-drug-alcohol policy for student athletes. Should Narragansett implement such a program? Do they have such a program?
That's a good question. I do not believe we have such a program, and I'll reference Tammy, are you?
Well, just the policy that we have for consequences, but it's not.
Yeah, it's not a three-strikes-that-you're-out.
Subjective.
So it does not have that program. So would you support a program such as this?
Well, I think what we've been doing has been working, so I don't see any need at this point to, to change.
All right. Any other comments, Mr. Rinaldi?
I'll, I'll comment. I, I think part of the Health and Wellness Committee that, that I'm the chair of, we're working with mental health awareness, and, and I group substance abuse with mental health, because in my, my training as a substance abuse counselor, there's a clear indication that mental health, you have a higher propensity for drug abuse. And it's never a clear-cut if and then scenario. Three strikes, you're out. That might work for some communities. I think we're small enough where it's, maybe you are, you know, put on hold, but the real, the real important discussion is, how do we work with these families and these children on an ongoing basis? What do we have in place? And how do we look at not just that kid, and not just what they're doing in a sport, but how do we look at what they're globally, holistically, what's happening in the home? How can we support them in the school community? How can we support them in the athletic community?
Thank you. Ms. McNeese, a comment?
I, I agree with what Keith and Diane said. You know, Narragansett's been trying to be really proactive in providing supports for students. You know, we've invested in students' assistance counselors at the middle school and at the high school, you know, and as Keith said, it's an ongoing thing. You know, students that are at risk, or that are, you know, having issues, you know, they need to be supported, as Keith referenced.
Thank you. Question number 12 is going to go to Mr. Rinaldi, and it is the one-to-one technology ratio. I presume you've heard of that. South Kingston and East Greenwich are pursuing one-to-one technology ratios for their students. Do you think Narragansett should pursue this? Why or why not? Now, would you like me to explain what that is?
If you'd like to explain for the general public, please do so.
To the camera, okay, let me tell what the camera, the, the public. One-to-one computing, sometimes abbreviated as 1-1, refers to academic institutions such as schools or colleges issuing each enrolled student an electronic device in order to access the internet, digital course materials, and digital textbooks. The contact, concept has been actively explored and sporadically implemented since the 1990s. One-to-one computing is frequently contrasted with a policy of bring-your-own-device, which encourages or requires students to use their own laptops, smartphones, or other electric devices in class. How does South, how does Narragansett come into this?
And I'm going to start the answer by, by saying that we're, we pretty much already are a one-to-one, and we don't have, you know, we don't declare, okay, we will give you a device, or you bring your device, and it's already happening. That is already happening. The digital literacy is, the program is training our staff on how to better utilize that technology that's already there, that's already robustly available, and we are developing, we are, we are being oven guard right now. We are leading the way in this subject. Narragansett, Pierce School, middle school, and the high school, and the elementary school is leading the way for digital literacy. We are doing this, we are actively pursuing new and creative ways to utilize these things in order to incorporate Common Core, in order to really have some kind of substance in learning. The high school has a new program where they're utilizing their off-time advisory periods, and now they have a new software program where you can better communicate where you have to be and when. Fine, that's one thing, you can access it through your phone. And then we have other programs at the middle school where a teacher can send out a mass text to all the, the students and parents who sign up. We're, we're doing it. And we need more support, and we need more community support to continue that.
Thank you. Would either Ms. Nobles or McNeese care to respond to that question?
I'd just like to expand a little bit on what Keith referenced in terms of the digital literacy project that we have. It's an actual partnership with the Harrington School of Communications and Media at the University of Rhode Island, and it's for professional development for our teachers in digital literacy, not just learning how to use the various forms of technology, but to actually integrate it into the teaching, and to improve teaching and learning in our schools.
Thank you. Ms. McNeese?
And I, again, I agree with my colleagues, but I think, especially with Keith, I mean, just because Narragansett hasn't given a laptop or a tablet, you know, to each child, we, you know, we are fully immersed in technology. Any teacher that, you know, wants to have a laptop cart, you know, for use in the classroom, you know, there's, there's more than enough laptop carts, you know, in each school. There's a smart board in every classroom, at the elementary school and at the Pierce School, you know, so Narragansett students already have that one-to-one experience. I have a friend in a, in a district that is piloting this year, where each student was given a tablet, but the problem is, is the district didn't invest in the licenses for the digital textbooks. So now, the child takes home a tablet, but still has to have, you know, a history book and a Spanish book, because the district hasn't bought all those online books. You know, and that particular district is having some issues with these tablets getting stolen, them getting damaged, kids leaving them at home, you know, so we already, we really are set up in a one-to-one situation in Narragansett right now, with the technology investments that we've made, without having to make that major investment in these one-to-one devices for kids.
Thank you very much. Question 13 is going to be directed to you, Ms. McNeese. South Kingston offers a preschool program and has considered expanding it. What do you think of adding such a program in Narragansett?
We have a wonderful preschool program that's housed at the elementary school. This is a combination of students with special needs and other neighborhood children, you know, that live in town that attend this preschool. Our elementary principal and our special education director have worked really hard, you know, with this you know, with the staff, to make sure that that's meeting the needs and meeting the demand, you know, so again, in Narragansett, if that was a need where we had to expand that program, that's already being done. But we have a wonderful preschool program that's housed right at the elementary school right now.
All right, thank you very much. Would anyone care to elaborate?
Yeah, I'd just like to second what Tammy said. We do have a preschool program, and it's a very good preschool program, and I think just as we want our graduating seniors to be prepared for their next step in life, it's also important for our entering students to be prepared. So, you know, for those little ones who testing show need some extra preparation for, to be ready for kindergarten, I support, you know, the preschool opportunities.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you the next question. How do you propose the district deal with declining enrollment? We've talked about this a little bit, and you have this declining enrollment in Narragansett. Should the district send its high school students to South Kingstown again, as was the tradition in the past? I know you're courting Jamestown, but what are your other options? Ms. Noble?
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure. Well, it's very true. We have been experiencing declining enrollment. In October of 2005, our school district was comprised of 1,600 students. As of October of 2014, we have 1,365 students, so we have had a loss of approximately 235 students over the, over the past decade. And it is a concern. It is a concern because we want to continue to be a comprehensive high school, providing a wide range of services to all of our students. And as you mentioned, we are courting Jamestown. We think, as Keith referenced before, that the Jamestown students, coming from a small school, would be a very good fit for them to come to Narragansett, and this would also help us in our enrollment. In terms of how to deal with declining enrollment, I think we've been very proactive in terms of making program adjustments and also in making staffing reductions. Just in the past few years, we've had 18 full-time positions eliminated from the budget.
Thank you. Any other comments, Ms. McNeese?
I would be strongly opposed to that idea. That is not going to be cost-effective for the taxpayers in Narragansett. That's not going to be good for children. You know, for us to consider, you know, closing the high school and then paying a tuition dollar per student to go to another high school, not going to be cost-effective. If you look at the tax bill in Narragansett right now, you know, we're paying 49 cents on the dollar goes to schools, and the 51% is municipal. You look at our neighbors in South Kingstown, they're in the high 70s, probably close to 79%, you know, of what they're paying for education. So, not going to be a good deal for the taxpayers. Children thrive in Narragansett based on, you know, the smallness and the sense of community. Go-Local-Prove rated us the number-one high school in the state two years in a row, and as Diane said, you know, as we have enrollment declines, we make staffing adjustments. That's how we, we maintain our costs, you know, and we are working hard, you know, to maintain our students, so they're not going to private schools, and, you know, perhaps a partnership with another district, but I would be strongly opposed to that. That's not going to be good. You know, people are buying homes in Narragansett because they want their child to go to the number-one high school in the state, you know, which we are.
Thank you. Mr. Rinaldi, a comment?
Yes, I want to cheer that last statement on, because, yes, people are going to buy more homes in Narragansett. It's that Field of Dreams classic line, "If you build it, they will come." I truly believe that. We are building a public school system that is going to be paramount to none other. We're going to be leading the way, and people will flock to Narragansett, and that is why our relationship with the town council needs to be lockstep. We need to figure out how to economically grow this school and town together.
Thank you. Now, another question that just happens to come first to you. You were in substance abuse counseling, I believe. Your question is, what can the district do to change the high school drug culture?
The question is, what can the high school-
What can the district do to change the high school drug culture?
Okay, and I hope that doesn't assume that we have a-
Well, that's my question. Do you have a drug culture here?
Well, I would, I would very much clearly say that a lot of communities have drugs as an undertone. I don't think any community is sterilized from that. We are working on that. Like I said, on the Health and Wellness Committee, we have a mental health awareness initiative, and we already have seed money that we are working with. And we do have a strong cohort of counselors, and we are starting to integrate all three schools and the mental health of all three schools, so that we can all talk together to know these families from when they're first entering the school, but not just know the kids, know the families. We have some of the highest engagement rate of athletics and music and theater and art. All these parts are reinforcing that positive connectiveness, so they don't need to fill that void with something like substance abuse. And we are working hard to make sure that we are giving these kids those opportunities and those families those opportunities, because it's not just the kids, it's getting all the drugs, it's the families that miss it or are having hard times. So, we are working on that, and we're going to continue to work on that.
Thank you. Would anyone, would Ms. Nobles or Ms. McNeese like to comment, or should we just go on?
I really liked Keith's answer. I mean, it's, it's, you know, you have to look at students that are at risk and what can you do to first identify those kids and provide services, you know, to help them and to help those families. And I think, I really like what you said about students that are engaged, whether it's in a sport or in the arts, or they feel connected to a teacher or connected to their classmates. Those are all, you know, going to be factors that are going to limit drug and alcohol abuse. You know, we have a very small-sized high school. We have a very personalized learning experience. You know, we've instituted this academy model, you know, with a freshman class and a sophomore class, and, you know, these are all wraparound factors in addition to our mental health professionals and our student assistance counselor, you know, to do the best we can to take care of our Narragansett students.
We're going to do a last question, which I think is very pertinent. With the recent threat against schools in Johnston and Cranston, what more can Narragansett do to keep students safe at school? And I would like to address this to Ms. Nobles.
This year, as part of our policy committee, we completely instituted a new security plan as part of our policy. There is plans for the individual schools, there's a plan for the district as a whole. It's totally coordinated with our police and fire. We have been proactive in this regard since Sandy Hook, in terms of making sure that our schools are safe for all of our students.
Any other comments? No, all right.
I'll comment real quick.
Okay.
Just to plug the fact that, to preemptively strike that problem, you know, mental health awareness, again, our anti-bullying, our concentration on that holistic model where we are trying to include, not exclude, because a lot of those studies show that it is those kids or that individual that feels excluded and has no attachment to the world. So, I think preemptively, we are doing that through our mental health and through our small community and through outreach and incorporating.
Thank you very much. I think this has been very lively, and we're now going to turn to our closing statements, and we'll start with Mr. Rinaldi.
Oh, boy. I wanted to thank the League of Women Voters very much. You guys do a lot of hard work, and it's very much appreciated. Thank you for your questions. I want to thank the Narragansett school system and the Narragansett community for giving me the opportunity to serve. I am having a wonderful time. I know that we go unopposed, but instead of asking for your vote, I'd like to just ask for your participation. We don't want your money, we want your efforts. We want you to be engaged with our system and our community to help build this to whatever it's going to be. If we believe in that Narragansett entity, and we don't want to have continuous decline in enrollment and population, then we need to put some effort into saying, hey, look at our town, look at our system, come here, be a part of us, be a part of Narragansett. And I think, I know we can do it, and we will do it, so everyone, throw your ideas in, throw your hats in the mix. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Nobles?
Along with the freedoms and liberties guaranteed in our country's founding documents, two ideas have made our country the greatest in the history of the world, and that is entrepreneurial capitalism and education for all. These two ideas, separate or in combination, have provided more opportunity and upward mobility for more people of all backgrounds than any other system ever implemented. I know that statement sounds pretty lofty for a local school committee race in a small town in the smallest state in the nation, but it is here on the local level in our small schools that the opportunity for excellent education is either provided or not. It is here in our schools and community that we either put in the time and effort on behalf of our children to ensure that they have the knowledge and skills to realize their dreams, become productive members of society, and responsible citizens who know their country's history, or we let them pass through a system unprepared for their future with a diploma that has little value. For too long, our country's educational system coasted with policies of social promotion and weak curriculum. We need to work our way back to rigor and raising the bar for all. It is the school committee, along with the town council, that is the closest and should be most accountable to the people that we serve. So, as I start my fifth term on the school committee, I'll do my best to ensure excellence in education. My commitment is to quality education for our students at an affordable price to our taxpayers.
Thank you very much. Ms. McNeese?
I'd like to thank, oops. I'd like to thank the League again for hosting this event. We appreciate that. This is a very exciting time to be on the Narragansett School Committee, and I'm so pleased that I have another two years to work with the four other members. Again, you know, we're a very high-functioning group. There is a lot going on in the next two years, and we already talked about a lot of that tonight. We talked about our partnership with URI, about digital literacy. We're going to be one of the only districts in the state to have this type of partnership with URI. The teachers are very invested, they're very excited about this, you know, and I can't wait to hear more about that. I talked tonight about the significant capital improvements that we're going to be making in the next two years, a brand-new greenhouse and classroom space, and a brand-new athletic complex that's going to be built next summer. It's also a very challenging time to be a school committee member across the state. For Narragansett, we have two contracts that we are going to be negotiating this year with our teachers and our support union, you know, so it's an exciting time to be on the school committee, but it's a challenging time. And I really look forward to a healthy, open relationship with our town council. And last, I would strongly like to encourage voters to vote yes for question nine for the athletic complex. This project has been planned for six years, and this is going to be such a wonderful benefit for the community. We have two-thirds of the funding. We're hoping on November 4th, you'll vote yes on question nine for the last one-third of the funds. Thank you very much, League.
Thank you very much. Now, I would like to remind everybody that this forum will be rebroadcast on Cox Channel 17 and Verizon Channel 28. It will be frequently broadcast between now and Election Day. There is a rebroadcast schedule on the table at the back of the room and on the League of Women Voters website at www.lwvri.org. It will also be available for viewing at www.independentri.com. Contact information for candidates will also be posted on the League website as soon as possible after each forum. These forums are a voter service, and we would very much like to hear from you, the voter, about how we are doing. So, please fill out the audience survey that was placed on your chair, or go to our website and download a copy. Last, but not least, stay tuned for the Narragansett Town Council candidates at 8:00 PM tonight, just 25 minutes from now, so stay tuned. Thank you.